We're called to order the regular meeting of the County Commission for September 11th, 2012. Please rise and with the pledge allegiance and slay to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is the best, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of our objective and our united culture.
At this time, would everybody please join me for a moment of silence for the victims and survivors of 911? First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I think we may have some changes that we need to make, John.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to ask the Commission if we could take item number 10, which is county reports, and put it to right before minutes, so make it the new item five and shift everything down.
Any issues with that? Seeing none, we'll move item 10 to right before item five, minutes. Anything else?
That's the only change that I know of.
Chairman Castaneda, I move to approve the amended regular meeting agenda.
One second. There's a motion to approve the meeting agenda as amended, and second, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say nine.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and we want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Anyone who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the county manager's office. You can get them through Randy. Is there any public input? Seeing none, we'll move on to county reports. I'm gonna let John go first today, I know that's not normal, he usually gets to go last, but we have some circumstances that are gonna do that.
Yeah, I've got Nikki Duner's here. She did some work for us last year for the Commission on, I don't know, it's trying to make some of the nonprofits more self-sufficient and help them to seek other sources of funding, so I wanted her to give you an update on what she did and kind of what she found from those meetings she had. She conducted public meetings where the nonprofits came, especially the ones, we made it mandatory for ones that the Commission had previously funded, and so wanted to let her give you an update on that. Before she starts, I was just gonna let you know that yesterday, myself and the Chairman met with Representative Martinez and Senator Morales and Representative Hamilton on our ICIP, our draft ICIP. Anthony, I'll present to you today the draft for you to start looking at. You've got it in front of you to make comments, and then we'll put it on the next Commission meeting for approval. It's due by October 1st. But we just went over with them some of our top five items, talked about, you know, that our priority is that pig barn, the fair barn, that blew the roof off the pig and lamb barn, that's a real priority because the fair is very important to this area for the kids. And so, that's one item that we want, and we showed them we're gonna be working on the engineering study and trying to have a project ready to go out for bid, that if they can give us money in this legislative session, then we'll be ready to go out to bid instantly. Preliminary numbers, what they told us is it looks like possibly each senator may get $950,000 for capital outlay this year, and the representatives will be closer around the $500,000 range each. So, looks like there may be some capital outlay this year for us to go after. So, we're working towards that and explaining to them all why that's so important. It was a very good meeting with them, and we went over some of the other things that we have, the reservoir and other items, but we really stressed that that's really important because of, we're sending kids to the state fair each year, and this is something that these kids look forward to, and we need a safe structure for them that after that microburst hit that building, it's now not, you know, there's some sections of it that aren't safe, so we want to tear it down and redo it. So, I just wanted to let you know we did have those conversations.
Welcome.
Good morning, Nikki.
Honorable Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, thanks for your time today. I'm sorry for slipping into your agenda like this. I'm here today to talk about two items. We'll quickly, one to report on our project that we did last year, which two of you generously funded with a small sum of contract money, and second, to propose sort of the continuation or progression of that project. So, we're getting the first item. Two of you generously supplied us with this small sum of money to really build the capacity of nonprofits in our area around resource development, and to make them stronger and make them better able to receive funding. Thank you very much for that contribution. The project was very successful, I think, and we did a number of things. We started out by meeting with everybody and asking, "What do you need in terms of resource development?" And after we had figured out what their needs were exactly, we provided a combination of trainings and workshops, and then we also did one-on-one coaching and a little bit of peer learning, so we threw a mix of methods at them, and they were very thankful. I think we received some letters from participants in this project. And I want to point out just a little bit exactly what we did when we worked one-on-one with three of the participants. Number one, we built a website for El Fujo, and that's finally creating a presence, an online presence for this crucial organization, and a way for them to solicit donations online. Number two, we helped Bike Works, which is our county-supported organization, to build their resource development strategy, and that led to the submission of one proposal that's currently pending in the second round, so we're very likely to get funded, and two more to be submitted later this fall. They will put together, with our help, a free program proposal, too. And number three, we accompanied DCEC, that's the Gila Conservation Education Center, through a really tough transition phase they were going through, and assuring that they're emerged strong from that and that will once again touch hundreds of Grand County students through their classroom and elder education programs this year. So, those are the three sort of intensive pieces we did. So, we made the small amount that you contracted to us really work for these organizations, and we maximized and leveraged those dollars with the other funds that we received from private sources. I can't tell you how many times when I pitched our work to foundations, I was able to say, "Our County Commission is innovative and civic-minded enough and cutting-edge enough to support the system, the nonprofit system in our area." And that really helped with making funds. During all times of that project, we credited the county with underwriting the assistance that these organizations were receiving for free as a result of your contributions. So, before I move to the second item, are there any questions, concerns, comments maybe on this project that we completed? You should have a report in your packets. We provided three reports throughout the year, and the report has more detail on where you are right now.
And it's a very well-written report, Nikki, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Miller has one, but the rest of us didn't.
It's even my life.
That's okay, we'll read it.
So, now I come to my second item. For the coming year, we would like to propose something a little different, and I think a little more exciting from a return on less than perspective for the county. Let me back up for a second. Last February, when we first met with this cohort of 13 organizations to assess their needs, something unexpected happened. Organizations told us that they, and each other, that they wanted to work together. What a concept. So, they said they wanted to collaborate, they wanted to coordinate their service, they wanted to cross-fertilize their programs, and they want to go for those big grants together. So, to us, it showed that they wanted to make our community a better place together rather than compete for scarce resources against each other. In my field, forgive me the jargon, we call that collective impact.
Collective what?
Collective impact. And organizations are smart that way, and they're in tune with where the funding has gone, because today, collaboration is not only helpful to get grants, today, collaboration is a condition for receiving grants. So, collaboration goes across these areas that our nonprofits are addressing, and it also goes across the sector of the economy, between public and business and nonprofits. So, you guys all have heard of public-private partnerships. Unfortunately, collaboration is not easy or immediate. It requires skills among individuals, it requires capacity among organizations, and it requires strategy, trust, and shared leadership at the level of a collaborative. So, it doesn't just come like that. People have to learn how to collaborate, unfortunately. And also, there's a lot of literature and research and best practices emerging around what we call collective impact. And one of the things that this research shows us is that there's always a need for a strong, neutral backbone entity to facilitate nonprofits working together, so that's something we see increasingly at our role to be in this community. So, what we proposed this year, and this is based on a conversation with Mr. Sari and Commissioner Miller, has a working title right now, and it's called the Council of Nonprofits. You all know the Council of Governments and the incredible work that our CLOG has done on behalf of local governments, helping with grant writing and capacity building. So, why not do the same for the nonprofit sector? Have an entity that maps the services, the assets and the gaps, have an entity that builds trust, that skills and capacity, an entity that kicks the collaborative spirit into gear, not just once a funding opportunity comes up, but before and after. I think that's really important, because so far, we've only come together when there's dollars showing up, and we need to start earlier than that. An entity that has sustainability, that elusive concept on its radar, and not necessarily the sustainability of organizations, because organizations are not of value of their own, right? Instead, we would aim for the sustainability of a shared mission, which is to make our county a better, healthy, livable, safe place. So, here then is what we propose. If we build the collaborative capacity of our nonprofit sector, Grand County will be able to attract more dollars for more programs and for more community impact. Rather than training each single nonprofit like we did last year, to be good little grant writers and fundraisers who can have them compete in a very small market against each other, collaboration gets more bang for the buck. Gets more bang for the buck. So, how do we get there? The scope of work, which I hope is in front of you, I sent it kind of late last night to Randy, so it's not in there, but it can probably be provided to you, because he's got a missed email. We propose a scope of work in your packets, on your packets, that outlines the steps we propose to get there, and as last year, we'll do it for cheap. As last year, we will receive reports with outputs, outcomes, analysis, accounting for every hour and every service provided, slightly different this year. And I'd be happy to take questions.
I'd just like to mention that the collaboration with the nonprofits is very, very important. It's easier to receive funding, I think, if they're working together. I do remember at one time, there were so many different economic development groups in Grand County, that it was hard to divvy out the money, so it would be equalized. One other thing, and I don't know if Nikki's gonna touch upon it, but as part of what she would do is do these workshops dealing in various facets of nonprofits, and I've suggested that John Sari be part of a workshop that would talk, that would give information to the nonprofits about what the county can do and what the county can't do, because I think there's a lot of misinformation out there, and that would be an important aspect of this.
As a presenter?
Right, as a presenter, along with Alex Brown, if Alex is willing to do it, but that would answer a lot of questions for nonprofits.
Yeah, and I just wanted to, in our conversations with Nikki the other day, kind of what we talked about when we're talking about this is, you know, we've had, for years, the nonprofits come and hit the Commission, they go and they go to legislators, and then we end up being fiscal agent for something we knew nothing about, that this would almost work to be a clearinghouse for the Commission like the COG is, that if somebody wants to get something through the Commission, it would have to, that's a nonprofit, they would have to go through this group. So, it wouldn't be a group that the Commission would continually fund. What the funding we're looking at is to try and get the things structured and set up, but then it's on its own, it's not part of us, it's just a group we work with, and they structure how they do business and everything else, but then the Commission could do something by resolution that says, "If you wish to do business with the Commission," well, it's a nonprofit level, "we need you to go through this group," because they can direct you to where the sources are. There might be other sources of funding that you don't have to come, you know, to the Commission all the time. The thing we talked about is, it takes, you know, an application, as Anthony has said, is sometimes they're an inch or two inches thick to fill out an application for a grant to get on the Commission agenda and to try and ask you for funding. It takes a one-sentence email, so it's a lot easier to come this way than it is to go the way that they should be going, and that's what this group would do, is try and help these people so that they go after those federal dollars and those grant dollars out there and not take this easy route of saying, "Here, we want some money from the Commission."
Can I have a question?
Why, I just think it's good that you all are coming together. I think we're gonna see more groups coming together to try and share information, you know? That's why we put together the Southwest Commission Alliance on this. That's really good, we're looking forward to what you all come up with.
Anything else?
What we can do is, Nikki's sent us a proposal, we can put that together for the next meeting to bring it in front of the Commission. We'll get you copies of it beforehand, but we'll put it as an agenda item on the next meeting, so you can take action on it if you wish to either go forward or to not.
On that subject?
Commissioners, you don't have that copy.
No, no.
So, we'll make sure.
Nikki, could you make sure they get a copy of that?
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you, Nikki.
John, do you have anything for, are you sure? Yeah, I'll call you for round two and roll. Joseph?
Do you have anything for the Commissioners? We're starting another program in the Gila this week. They're starting a program in the Gila, they're also starting another project, they're helping with the resources they need from the get-go, find their jobs, get talent, get those discounts. It's a really amazing thing that's happening at the jail with all volunteers and nonprofits. We're gonna, currently, we're gonna hire two full-time officers and a temp position. We're finishing up revising the post orders for the jail. We changed them a little bit, not over there, saw that some things didn't work, so we had to change them. We're getting together with the Association of Counties to do the policies, both of the policies again, they're gonna do an inspection of the facility, and they also gave us some information to be accredited through the Association of Counties. We're still looking at getting medical in there. They did send us a contract, we're looking over that to make sure the contract's complete with what we need and what we're paying for. Brian Bentley reviewed the contract, Ralph Dowar's gonna review it also, just to make sure that every point's covered in that contract, and hopefully we'll get medical in there.
And how are your supplies and items for your education programs, John? Are you?
It's going good, yeah.
Are people donating books?
Yes, they're donating books, and actually, the public's been very good at helping out and just volunteering and giving what they can, and I really appreciate it.
Further questions?
How are the employees getting used to the pod?
It's a process. We've been in there a little over a month now. It's a lot different than the old jail, it's a lot more secure. It is a dormitory-style setting instead of the south setting, so it did take some getting used to, but we're getting into the routine, and now with the post orders in place, that'll even help even more.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Earl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Besides the day-to-day maintenance that we've been trying to work on, rains are still keeping us pretty busy. We are up at Sacatoon right now, working on that rack project that we had with the Forest Service. I've gotta have that money spent by the end of this month. Might pull your mic up a little bit. We should have that money spent by the end of this month. Does it on?
Okay.
But anyway, we were able to do a couple of low-water crossings up there, we're pouring the footing on it today, and then I've got some red-rack baskets to finish putting in up there. So, hopefully I'll have all that money spent, I don't want to give any of it back to them. We should have it done. We did have some money left over from the special projects on our LGRF down there at Red Rock, and we were able to do another low-water crossing down there. And then next week, we're gonna jump over to Baird and help them get those street chips sealed over there. We will probably be over there all week, they're doing quite a bit this year. We've been helping out the convention center when needed over there, and hopefully, I'm hoping by next month, we can get down there to hatch heat and we'll get that approach on that transfer station fixed up for them. That's about it.
And I'd like to thank Earl for working with the Bicycle Advocacy Group on painting charos and teaching them how to paint charos, which will take a lot of work away from you all for having to do this, thanks, Earl.
Were you able to check the Morales Road, if you know that was going with the flooding when?
No, I haven't. I did go and check that Loma Verde out again, and I did have an estimate on there that whatever we get down to, we can break about it a little bit, but...
Any other questions?
Anthony, I know you've been busy, so...
Well, I would like to report that, number one, there are flooding concerns out there in the Gila and bridges. We have been receiving some concerns from Mexican Environment Department on the construction that we did do. We've been trying to work with the Army Corps of Engineers to try and alleviate some of those concerns, but when it came right down to it, they want us to remove the sediment out of the, we call the riverine, or the flood plain, and so, we've got some estimates to remove that, and so, pretty costly process. We haven't begun yet because the new channel, the overflow channel that we have, has running water in it, and so, but as soon as we can get that thing dried up a little bit, we'll get back in there and do what they're asking us to do. So far, of course, we haven't had any heavy, we've had some heavy rains, but nothing to give us the type of flooding that we were anticipating, so I just want to report on that. But I would like to mention one other thing, I want to remind the Commission that we still haven't dealt with the matter of the roadways on the state lands yet. I had it on my calendar last month, and then I think there was one meeting, and I didn't attend the meeting, and so I wasn't able to remind you, but we still need to get that back, take a look at those roads, and see if we can't get that fixed up for the state land office. So, outside of that, we want to discuss the ICIP. Do you want to go through each one of these? Do you want, how do you want to do this? I can explain some of the things, I know I put this thing together, get some recommendations from the manager, and then there's the projects that we're already working on, and we certainly want them on there. There's also some things that the planning department has been working on that we see that has to be on the ICIP or else it really isn't considered for funding. And so, if you'd like, we can at least go through the 2015, there's some others. We might even want to rearrange the priority list. This is just, I took last year's list, added the new projects to it, some of the projects we've been working on, and that's how I come up with what we've got so far. But as John mentioned, the first, I think the first two projects, number one, the structure out there at the fairgrounds, I think was the number one priority, we need to get that fixed. I think that there's a, not only is that thing pretty much structurally unsound in some places of the building, but I think that, I think the county fair is one of the most important things that we've got going in the area. There's a lot of people that attend the county fair, we have the 4H, you know, the EVA participants in the fair, and I think that's extremely important for our youth, so I think it should be one number one priority. Also, the construction of this building, I know that Earl's already done some of the construction, and they want, John wants them to continue to do that, but we still need money to continue with the building portion of it, and so, that's what I have number two. And number three, the reason I put industrial, small business park for economic development is that through our economic development master plan, that's the number one identified priority that the master plan identified, and since we're gonna have to try and locate funding for that park, it needs to be high up on the priority list as far as Grand County's concerned. And so, when we go for funding to the EDA or to the USDA for infrastructure, for instance, I think that the priority level that the county shows that it's a higher priority, I think that they'll see that, not only that our master plan and our consultants say it's a priority, but the Commission also agrees with that.
So, you have that as number three?
I have that as number three.
I'm just curious, explain to me why that is a priority over completing the, or doing the remodeling of the conference center? Different kinds of funding?
Yeah, and the reason why that hasn't been funded, and so we're trying to seek funding, the conference center has been funded, and so, it's a priority to get it done.
So, this is a brand-new project?
Yeah, that's a brand-new project. We list the conference center because that's a project that's currently funded, we're gonna seek some more funding in the future, once we get this done, to try and do the inside, but the priority is trying to get some economic development in here, so we can fill the conference center once we get it remodeled.
Yeah, and now, whether you're seeking state or federal funds, the listing of the project on your ICIP is not always mandatory, but they always look at it, and it always gives you points for having it on your ICIP. And the higher it is in your priority list, the more points you get for it, so... Next one is, number four, is the water storage facility in Fort Baird, that's the reservoir project that we have. I put that as number four, that's where it was last year, and it was on the top five priority because, number one, the state, all the monies for the AWSA is now filtered through the AWSA fund set up by the state of New Mexico, and once the federal dollars come to the state, then it becomes state monies, and therefore, it has to be on your ICIP, or you can't get any capital monies from the state without having it on your ICIP. The courthouse renovation was next. It was one of our top priorities last year, again, we haven't received any funding, we still need to go out and look for some more funding. I think that Nikki's already gone, but I think that's gonna be our number one priority in seeking funding. I think we still have some money available through Nikki's contract, and so, I think that's, we're gonna get together and we'll talk, just trying to seek funding for that building.
And that project is mainly to upgrade the electrical in the building. We've reached a point where we can't do any more remodel or renovation to the building unless we upgrade the electrical system, and that's why that's $700,000. It's running a new electrical system to the building, a feed, and then going through and redoing the electrical, because it still has the screw and fuses like we've talked about, then they're not gonna let us do any more renovations or upgrades to that building.
The next one is the Fort Baird Medical Facility. I put it as water project, except they didn't leave me enough room to put it as water and wastewater, and the reason I put water and wastewater is because there's two projects out there, one for a lift station that was funded last year through capital outlay and is going through the Mexican Environment Department, and the second is a water project from the old Fort Baird site. And so, I think that there's been some monies allocated for planning, and so, I put that as, already, the funded to date, $185,000 includes the $100,000 appropriation we got last year, $50,000 for a planning grant, I think we spent about $35,000 for the initial planning. the initial planning for the lift station. And so, that's what I put in here, and $108,000 is what we still lack for the preliminary estimate for the lift station, and then $350,000 would be for additional water line to the facility.
Can we ask the ladies to turn up the house mics a little bit, if they can back there?
I can back into the mic closer, does that help?
Ask Mary Alice, she's the one that says she can't hear.
Sorry. What we can do without the air conditioning, if you'd rather?
It's cold.
Mary Alice is out.
Okay. Go ahead, Anthony.
Next on the list is the Fort Baird economic development, which, I'm not for certain where, what's gonna happen with Fort Baird, but we want to include it as an economic development site. I think that's, overall, I think that's the best way of explaining what we'd like to see with economic development. Of course, what the commission doesn't see is, is there's a narrative included in each one of these, and I'll get that to you, as soon as we can decide on what exactly we want to do and the priority level that we want to set. There's a narrative, it explains exactly what the project is, any monies that have been put forth to the project, what the process is, who's responsible for the project once it's funded, you know, a lot of those type of things like that. The legislators that are involved in the project, so I can fill the commission in a little broader idea of what the actual ICIP is for. I don't know if you guys have ever seen one of those. It's not extensive, in that it doesn't have everything that we would like to put in there, but it does explain exactly what the project is about. And so, it's a little bit easier to see what the economic development project for Fort Baird. The civic center and the Cora Caminos Transit Terminal, both projects already existing, we want to put those on there. We do have the current expenditures that we're putting into there. I'm a little bit low on the transit, I guess I need to put the other appropriation that we've got, close to $1 million, $980,000, $980,000. But I'll get that in there. The rest are some projects that were on the last year's ICIP, the industrial park at the airport. Of course, the modifications to North Hurley Sewer, we're still anticipating funding from the USDA for that sewer project. Last I talked, we had all of our paperwork in, they were sending it to, I think to Washington, and so hopefully we'll be funded soon. Hopefully that project will get going by the winter time, so we can get that project going, so. We've got, of course, our GIS mapping, trying to upgrade what we're doing in planning, trying to get to the point where we can do our own plans, instead of having to contract for our plans. Although, we appreciate what our engineers do for us, it's pretty costly, and so it reduces the amount of projects we can do annually. So anything that we can do to do more projects in-house will give us a better opportunity to get more projects done. And now, what we're striving to do, is trying to have projects ready. Several ready projects, so that if there is one available, we'll certainly be ready for them. We've got two road projects right now that are ready, and the next thing that we're trying to accomplish is we're trying to survey our right of ways. We want to establish as many right of ways as we can, especially on our arterial roads and school bus routes. I think it's important in that we have to have certification from the state in order to do, to improve those roads, and so right of way is extremely important.
Probably the number one thing that we don't have established in a lot of our roadways is right of way. Can we continue?
Anthony, what would Phase Four be for Baton Memorial Park?
Phase Four, I don't know. Phase Four has been there for a while. What it is, is they wanted to build better grandstands at the baseball fields, put lighting on the fields, because currently there's no lighting on the field, so after dark, the fields can't be used. So that was always what the fourth phase of Baton Park was. The third phase was to get the fields astroturfed, and then they were moving to, trying to make them to where it was easier to play the games, the Little League games and things like that, because right now what we run into is we don't have big grandstands, and then once it becomes dust, the games have to shut down and you can't go into extra innings if you needed to, or if games are running long, because of having to start later when they're playing tournaments, they play two to three games on each field a day. That's what the purpose of the Phase Four is, and so it's lighting, not just for the fields, but throughout the parks, so the park becomes usable for the citizens later into the evening. Because in the winter time, at 5 o'clock, basically the park is shut down.
We also need to look at the drain system.
Yeah.
Every time we get a good rain, there's a big crevice right down the infield.
And then, just one other, Anthony, the senior assisted living facility. Is that the Bay Community?
That is the one that the group came and presented to the commission at one point in time, that they wished to have the commission help with senior assisted living. So it's always been on our ICIP, and it's not necessarily, things that are on our ICIP are not necessarily all of our projects. There are sometimes organizations like the mutual domestic water associations and things like that, that they're inside Grant County. If they're seeking funding, we have to have their projects on our ICIP, so they live on an ICIP, because not all agencies are required to put in one, so what they do is they get on to ours. And so that's, just because they're on here, that doesn't mean all of these are our projects. The Riverwalk and Cameron Creek Trail, that's not a project that we're seeking to do, it's a project that's being sought to do in the community, and so it needs to be on an ICIP so they can try and go after funding. So that's why some of those show up, so these aren't necessarily all ours.
Also, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I think that sometimes we have requests from some of these entities to be fiscal agents for their projects, and in order for us to be fiscal agents, they need to be on our ICIP also.
On the 2015 ones on your list, Anthony, do they need to be moved so that they have no dollars in the 2014 column? And they start with 2015?
Yes, they do.
So those all shift?
Okay, so we'll be working on this for the next two weeks and be approving this at the next meeting in September. Yeah, if you have something, let Anthony know, and he'll go ahead and put it on here for you, because we cannot have too many things. I mean, we've narrowed our list down originally, when I got here, I think our ICIP was five or six pages long, and we've kind of concentrated on things that we thought were manageable projects, that were truly things we could seek funding for. So if there's items, let Anthony know, we can add them to it, and then we'll bring it to the commission on the 25th.
Okay.
A couple of things that I, that come to mind, that I think we need to start putting on here and start moving up into the priorities. One is North Hurley Road. The road superintendent and I got a chance to drive out there a couple of weeks ago, and it's getting narrower and narrower and narrower, just from the edges cracking off, and probably gonna have to seek funding to do something out there. I don't know if it's gonna be curb and gutter, or sidewalks, or what, but it's gotta be something. And I also toured Tyrone, that's one that's going to need some maintenance in the respect of probably some chip sealing, and probably not this year, maybe not even next year, but in the next couple of years, it's probably gonna need a chip seal or we're gonna lose that. There's a couple of places where the subbase is failing and they've had to patch, but I think most of it can be fixed with chip seal. So that's a couple of things I'd like to see added.
We can add whatever we want to to the ICIP, but if we could have a year that you'd like to see maybe that funded, I think that one of the most important things is the priority list, especially the top five, we have to have that. And I think that's primarily what our legislators look at whenever they're looking for funding.
And I concur with the top five currently. And if we get one or two of those funded, then those other projects may move up into that. So by the end of the month, or by the next meeting, I'll have the dates that I think those ought to be on there.
And rightly so, I think the construction of the county fair facilities.
And I just wanted to let the Commissioners know, the top five are what we present to legislators at the Prospectors Forum this fall before they go into the legislative session. So those will be the top five, that we put together a packet on and give to them, and that's why we're trying to do engineering. On the top two, we're trying to have engineering studies done and design. Yeah, I'd like to have design done on both of those prior to the legislative session. We have the funds already allocated for that, so.
And you were going to sit on that for me for the program?
Right, so, yeah. Anything else for Anthony?
Nice job, Anthony, thank you. And so you'll give us explanations of each of the projects and...
Sure.
Alfred, you want to go?
Just wanted to let you know, we're at, as far as our collections, with the 2011, we've collected $19,721,1156, we're at 94.8% of collections right now. I do want to let the public know that letters may be going out from Mexico, taxation and revenue, tax options, those that have been delinquent for three years. They have, we have done have a tax sale in about three years right now, so the letter will be going out this month, and hopefully by the end of the month, they will be here to start working them, and they're scheduling the tax sale for January. And this will be for 2006, '07, '08, and '09. So those of you that think that, you have, feel, if you have, feel, if you have the open taxes, please give us a call or come by our office. The phone number that's gonna be on the letter is gonna be the property tax, but they're welcome to call my office as well, 574-0055, and we can help them out as well. Also, taxes will be starting to come out here in November, I'd encourage the public, please call your taxes office for address changes if not possible. I know some people from the Pilsner area haven't changed their address yet, so I really want to encourage those people to, you know, get your addresses before, you know, get any more delinquent than what they are. And that's all I have, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Alfred, very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I really don't have any report, but I have a meeting at 10:30 with the property owners, so if we don't get to the tax rates that are about to be presented to you for approval, if you have any questions, hopefully John can answer those.
Just, I did the yield control form for the county, county looks good. I did be in contact with the local schools, and really when you look at the rates overall, there should be a comparison there. And again, I don't want to go too much into detail, but you'll see the comparisons from 2011 to 2012. So, that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for him?
No, none at all. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you very much. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I just want to report over the month of August, we had 368 calls for service, we took 167 reports, we investigated 27 motor vehicle collision reports in August. For the month of August, our Civil Process Division served 794 papers, which is DVOs, subpoenas, notices, RITs. They did 52 transports to and from the jails, the prisons, doctor's offices, courts, for a total of 4,223 miles in the month of August. Other than that, the staff's been really busy. We're coming down to the end of summer, so hopefully it'll slow down a little bit for us. I just want to commend my staff for keeping up with the workload that we've been dealing with. We're shorthanded a couple of deputies and, but we're keeping up, and I just hope that with summer coming to a close, we'll be able to catch up a little bit. That's all I have to report, unless you have any questions.
Any questions, please, Chair? Well, just looking at the police water, it's been a busy, busy time for you, Chair, so to commend all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. I did want to report on the special election that we're currently in. We've received about 3,000 ballots back, 14% voter turnout is where we're at so far. Again, we have until...
Then the last election.
Right, and then. So, we have until September 18th, 7:00 PM, to get those back. All the phone calls that we've done, we've done plenty of phone calls, are all positive, you know, so I think that people really want that 911 system. We still have a lot of undeliverable mail. If you haven't received your ballot, come by our office or call us, we can get one sent out to you. And you just pick one up, you can pick one up if you come by our office, we can just process one for you and you can leave with it in your hand. Okay? Okay? Here in the next couple of days, we'll start putting the link up, so you can get ready for the November election. And we'll start the absentee applications online, that way you can download and mail them into us. You can always call our office, 574-0042. We'll send those applications out to you. Ballots will be mailed beginning October 9th. That's when early voting starts as well in our office. You can come by our office and absentee in person and early vote. I've been working with the attorney, Mr. Gorman. If you guys approve the resolution coming up for the Sunday sale of alcoholic beverages, we will go forward and send that question up to the printer, so we can put that question on the ballot for the November election. That way the county residents can have their say on that. And other than that, unless you have any other questions, that's all I have.
Busy time for you, Rob.
Very busy. It's a fun time of year for Rob.
I'd just like to note, Rob has a new employee in his office, I don't know if...
Oh, that's right. Liz Gorman's is our new employee, she took over for Sandy Botta. Sandy left our office, she wanted to go back to school and work with computers, so Liz is in our office now, and she's picking it up rather quickly.
Welcome, Liz.
Welcome, Liz, and good luck to Sandy. So do you need seconds?
Nope.
All right.
I could, but I won't.
Don't save up a whole month.
I'm gonna save it for next time. The agenda's gonna be shorter in my report.
Then we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is minutes. We need to approve or disapprove the August 23rd, 2012 regular meeting minutes.
Chairman Caston, I need to approve the August 23rd, 2012 regular meeting minutes.
I'll second it.
There's a motion to approve the August 23rd, 2012 regular meeting minutes. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove the September 6th, 2012 special meeting minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, will you approve September 6th, 2012 special meeting minutes?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve the September 6th, 2012 special meeting minutes. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Financial reports, review of the July 2012 financial report. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. In your packet you have the July 31st, 2012 financial. I'll start with the general fund. Cash balance as of July 1, 2012 was $3,707,696. Revenues year-to-date as of July 31st are $247,779. There were zero transfers done, operating expenditures of $394,801, salaries and benefits of $431,600, leaves a cash balance of $3,129,74 at July 31st, with projected transfers in of $785,010, transfers out of $2,152,651, projected revenues of $8,656,296, operating expenditures of $2,788,881, projected salary and benefits of $5,327,719, leaves cash balance as of July 30th, 2013 of $2,301,129, less the required 312 reserve of $2,105,342, leaves a surplus of July 30th, 2013 of $195,787.
Okay. Any questions on the general fund?
So, page two is the revenues. We've collected 2.8% of the budgeted revenues so far this year. Page three is the transfers. We've done 0% of the budgeted transfers. The next page is the road fund, the beginning balance as of July 1st. The next page is the road fund, the beginning balance as of July first, 2012, is four hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars, year-to-date revenues of one hundred thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars, operating expenditures year-to-date of three thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars, salaries and benefits of ninety-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars, leaves a cash balance at July thirty-first of four hundred and thirty thousand and ten dollars, with projected transfers in of eight hundred and forty thousand, revenues of five hundred and thirty, seven hundred and sixty-one, projected operating expenditures of three hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars, projected salaries and benefits of one million, one hundred and thirty thousand, four ninety-seven, leaves a cash balances of July thirtieth, June thirtieth, 2013, of three hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars, less the one-twelfth reserve of one hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars, leaves a surplus as of June thirtieth, 2013, of one hundred and eighty-nine thousand and fifty-four dollars. And you see below that there's been fifteen point nine-five percent of the revenues collected year-to-date, and zero percent of the transfers done year-to-date. The next is the corrections fund. As of July first, they had a cash balance of three hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars, they've got year-to-date revenues of seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and six dollars, year-to-date operating expenditures of twelve thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars, salaries and benefits year-to-date of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and one dollars, leaves a cash balances of July thirty-first of two hundred and ninety-nine thousand and eighty-two dollars, with projections through June thirtieth, 2013, of transfers in of one million dollars, revenues of seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars, operating expenditures of three hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars, projected salaries and benefits of one million, six hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars, leaves a projected cash balances of June thirtieth, 2013, of seventy-six thousand and seven dollars. Sorry for not getting all the two thousand twelves to thirteens in this report. And they've done nine hundred and, or nine point four-eight percent of the revenues have been, budgeted revenues have been collected as of July thirty-first, and zero percent of the transfers have been done.
Any questions on the financial report for July 2012? Seeing none, we'll move on. Approve or disapprove the September tenth, 2012 expenditure report? John, is there any?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Going through it, I don't see any extraordinary expenditures. We've got about seven hundred and four thousand in expenditures out of the funds, and then the rest of the money is in salaries, we have two payrolls in there. As you saw from the financial reports, Grant County is heavily into salaries, not a lot of expenditures is where our money goes. So the expenditure report is one million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars.
The only thing I saw was like forty-something thousand to Tyler, I assume that's an annual.
That's, we have our payments that are due on our software licensing and our maintenance of our software system, and that's what that is, is a portion of those that flow through throughout the year. Different licenses expire at different times for the different modules in the clerks, the assessors, the treasurers, and the manager's office is where we are running the different packages.
Okay. Any other questions for John? I accept the motion.
Oh, I move to approve the expenditure report for September tenth, 2012.
There's a motion to approve expenditure report for September tenth, 2012? Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. New business? We have the Loma Verde Road residents to request the county assume road maintenance responsibility for their roads. Chief, how are you?
I'm all right.
Go ahead, just state your name when you get there, and for the cameras.
My name's Lonny Sandoval, and good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm here today for our road, Loma Verde, off of Kirkland Road. It's presently, it's considered to be a private road, and we don't get any relief from the county to maintain the road. The road right now is in such bad conditions that we, as the people that live out there, it's costing us way too much money to put material into the road just so that we can enjoy the road. I've spoken with Earl, with the County Road Department, and he's been tasked several times with getting a estimate as to what it would take to maintain the road. He said it wouldn't cost that much to get it up to specs. We did petition everybody that I have made contact with, along with Missy Bada, who has done the same, has done signatures to have the county go in and maintain this road. We understand that we will be taxed or somehow paid back, but, you know, us as county payers, we pay our taxes just like everybody else, yet we don't get the same relief that everybody else gets. You know, and I believe the road has been dedicated already to the right specs, and we understand that, you know, it's going to take, it's going to take, I think, sixty percent or fifty percent of us to agree to get this assessment district in.
Mr. Chairman, I had a conversation with Mr. Sandoval last week, and I wanted to recommend you bring this to the Districtal Commission. It's been here several times. Lonny, I have to apologize, I was mistaken in that the road has not been dedicated. I did a little bit of research after you left the office. The plat specifically states that the roads are private roads, and that when you do a development, the developer can choose to have the road remain private for the security or other residences, or so that the public cannot use those roads, for whatever reason it might be, but the plat is pretty specific. I apologize, that was an error when I told you that I thought the roads were already dedicated. Most of the time when you have a subdivision, the roads are dedicated to the county so that, so that indeed this type of action could be taken, so that the county can maintain after the development is completed. But not, for some reason, not in this case. So with that, the road warrant is pretty specific in that all the residences that, I'll read the language here. All landowners on whose land the road proposes to be dedicated to the county enters and or crosses or abuts must sign up for the preliminary petition for dedication of the road. And so it'll have to be all of the residences that abut or adjacent to the road or other property crosses into. If you look at the, at the map in the mapper's office, you can see that the owners actually own to the center of the roadway. Now, it's kind of odd that the roadways have already been cut out like they were going to be dedicated, or like they were going to propose a dedication, but that never happened. And in the plat, like I said, there's language in there that says remained as private roads. The roads are for the usage of the people in there, there were some utility easements cut out of the roadway, but that's the extent of the easements that were done at that time.
Is it possible, and I don't know if you know anything, if you have to look at it, is under the statutes, we have the improvement district, where the requirements for improvement district are two-thirds of the property owners, not so much the residents, but it's actually, you look at the size of the property owned by each person, and you have to get two-thirds of the property. If they sign a petition, they can petition the commission for an improvement district.
Mr. Sandoval? John? I think that in order to do an improvement district, I think that it's still the same, that the road still has to be dedicated to the county. So I don't know, I don't know if the allowance of the state, and maybe this is a good question for our attorney, if the state would allow two-thirds of the property owners, but yet we have an ordinance that says that all the property owners has to, you know, have to sign a preliminary petition. I would assume that we follow the state statute, but yet we have an ordinance that says we have to have a hundred percent of the people to.
I think I find them as two different issues. One, I think that before the county can have an improvement district, they have to have a dedicated road to approve. So I see them as two totally different issues. So that would be the first thing we would need to do, is every property owner would have to dedicate to the county their easement, not an easement, they'd have to dedicate it. But however wide we request, we're at sixty feet, right? So each side would.
There has been, there's been dedication of sixty-foot, that's currently within the subdivision regs, there's been variances for fifty-foot, but there, all of those roadways have already been identified on the plat. We look at the plat, and on our records, those things have already been identified. For some reason, though, they does remain as private roads. And so that certainly has to be done first.
Everybody has to dedicate to the center of the road, to the county. Then we can form a road improvement district, is that correct?
You can form one, and there's also something I mentioned to Mr. Sandoval also. In past practice, and subdivision regs also allow for the residents to enter into an agreement with Grant County to assist in improving the roads. We've done this in the past, where the residents pay for the materials and the costs of getting the road up to standard, and in the county actually. But that is solely on the approval of the commission, and with the resource, resources available that the road department may or may not have.
Well, we don't want to be down this road and then not accept the road. If we give them direct direction on how to build a road, and it's built to our specifications, if a contractor does it, or if Earl does it, either one, I think this commission would accept that road. And my understanding is, you know, after that dedication, my understanding is that those are kind of the two options, is as the residents themselves, they could approve the road, come and petition the commission to accept this road because it now meets our standards, or the statute for the improvement district, as part of it, is once it's done, it becomes a county-maintained road at that point. So if you accept to do an improvement district, as soon as you're accepting to do the improvement district, you're also accepting the road for maintenance, because we're going to go and bring it to our standards. And the way the improvement district works is we figure out the cost for doing it, we do it, and then that cost is applied to each of the landowners proportionately to the property they own that's attached to the road, and then they can either pay it in whole, right at that point in time, or it's put on and there's an extra tax, a tax that is done, where the treasurer will collect an extra tax that goes to pay off that balance of that charge. So, and it varies, you know, what we do is go get an estimate, we've talked about it with past commissions, of the easiest thing would be for us to go and, like to New Mexico Finance Authority or a group like that, before they had their issues, and get a loan, and then this group would be responsible, and the loan would be paid from the revenues that we would generate from that tax.
I think the first step is, are they supposed to be dedicating their easement to the county, or are they supposed to be giving that portion of the property to the county? How does that work? Because I know where we're at, it's all these easements that are dedicated.
Physically, it's the property, but from the technical issue, I'll do the research and get back to you.
I couldn't hear, what was that?
Yeah. Because I think that's the first step, we need to make sure everything's dedicated so we can move on.
Right, because my understanding is that is private property as it stands right now, correct?
To the center of the road.
To the center of the road, right.
According to the maps, yeah, it's going to be private property.
So in fact, it is, the question would be whether or not they dedicate that property in the easement form, and what logistics we take to make that, and I'll look into that and get back to you.
Can we have that for the next, what, the twenty-third?
Do we have that at two?
No, this is just bringing you, yeah, you don't need to table.
This is, Mr. Sandoval was asked to be on here so he can bring this to the attention of the commission and see what direction the residents need to go.
Now, Dave?
To reach their goal.
Lonny handed this also an order and permanent injunction that was signed by Judge Vesely. Can you research that and see if that was adhered to? It doesn't appear that it had been.
I'm going to research it as well, I got that from one of the residences out there in Loma Verde. It does have a court stamp on it, and it does say in there that Quebec was found not guilty to defrauding the people that were out there. He brought the road up to county standards at that time. Definitely not to these times, it's, you know, really bad, but he was found out guilty at that point for that subdivision. And if you look in there, it says, the document, let's see, it says for the, it referred to subdivision, on page two, there's insignificant evidence to prove that Loma Verde did not comply with the disclosure statement of the plat, and that Grant County subdivision regulations at the time was constructed. The only competent witness was James, well, testimony to the compliance and testified to by James Decker and Robert Cooper. Cooper was the current road superintendent, but, and it says, Gantana was not even employed at the, by Grant County at the time the roads were constructed. So, you know, this is, this is a court document back in, what, ninety-two, that says that it was all brought up to county specs at the time, but for whatever reason, county didn't pick it up.
We'll research that. Our third standard has been set since nineteen ninety-seven, so assuming that they were probably different. And talking to most of these people, they want to assess, they want to get this done, and I think it's been a long time waiting, I know I've talked to quite a few people that live up here, and so we need to really point them in the right direction so we can get this done as fast and as easily as possible.
I also want to find solutions rather than problems, so.
Right.
Let's see if we can figure this out.
There's also an option, and that we've done on several roads in the past, is that approving a portion of the road as people can afford to improve it. Now, it's difficult because the people in the first portion of the road, you know, don't want to really pay for the last portion, and, you know, and so, but the assessment district just takes care of them, you know, we follow the state statute. It's pretty specific on that everyone has to share the cost.
Okay.
I think the quicker we get to some answers, the quicker we can start moving on it, so we appreciate your coming forward.
Good presentation, Lonny, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? You done?
Well, we do have some, some people, I'm sorry, I should have brought them, we do have some people that have a lot of knowledge of that subdivision here, that took time out of their day to come up and say something.
They're more than welcome to if they'd like to. If they'd like to wait and just meet with the attorney and planner, they're welcome to do that also.
You know, I've actually, I've actually talked to some of the people that provide garbage pickup, and they don't even want to use that road anymore, they say it's really affecting their big trucks, and with all that weight, it's really missing them out. And I know that's a really bad problem, but I just think we need to get some out, especially if they're one of the people.
Mr. Chairman, I'll research that.
Okay.
I'm just waiting to see if they want us to do this.
I'm Patricia Rogers, I've lived out there since nineteen seventy-nine, this has been going on ever since. I know it's been brought up to standard several times, but every time we get it and try to get the county to take it over, it changed their standard. And it just seems to me like we're just getting a runaround all the time. I would like to have, I can't hardly hear everything that's going on, but it just seems like everybody has an excuse why we can't have it done. And it just, I'm just real disgusted with it.
We just told them that we want solutions to get it done, so I'm sure we will. We just told them that we want solutions to get it done, so I'm sure we will.
I'd give you 40 feet if we needed.
Okay.
But I don't think you could get it there because that's one of the places that it'd be very difficult.
Okay.
Some of it's just was filled in with huge rocks, and when they put the water line in, they had to go over in the middle of the road to get it to end.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else? Welcome, please state your name for the round.
I'm Ceci Yaya, and better known as Sally.
Hi Sally.
And we've been living up there in Loma Verde for at least 26 years. We have addressed the commission on several occasions, as Mrs. Rogers just stated, and we've always been given the runaround. The one thing that I did want to mention is that we have residents like Mrs. Rogers that are older residents, I'm 62 years old, you know, I'm getting up in age, and we need ambulance services up there, we need hospice, we've needed a lot of the medical team to go out there, and it is extremely difficult for them to address our community, our residents, because they don't have access to those houses, the road is so bad. We haven't had rains this year, but when it rains, those roads are terrible. When the creek floods, it's impossible for people to get across. And so that brings up the expense issue. It is going to cost a lot of money to bring that creek up to county standards, and as Mrs. Rogers already stated, we have tried to do that in the past, and then we have been ignored. And we have addressed the commission so many, so many times, over and over again, and it's the same thing, we have to bring it up to county standards, we have to dedicate the road. And this information isn't new, it's old, it's really old. And so something needs to be done about it. I think that it is very unfair for the commission or the county to try to tax the residents or have us responsible for the expense, for the one reason that when we bought that property, we were original buyers out there, and the, I think they're called covenants, our contract said that Decker would bring the road up to county standards. Now, I don't know who dropped the ball there and didn't enforce that, but when I sign a contract, I am expected to fulfill that contract. And I think that he should have been expected to fulfill that contract. Whoever did him a favor, whatever happened, I don't know, because he didn't fulfill his contract. And now the ball's dropping off on the residents, I think that's extremely unfair. And just like you're trying to get funds to improve North Hurley Road, Tyrone is a thorough way to find some funding to bring that road up to county standards. I don't think that should be impossible if there was really some effort made. And as far as signatures of the residents, our residents up there, all of us have signed petitions numerous times, I mean, this is like, we're, you know, doing this over and over again, we're spinning wheels. How many times do we have to do that?
Mr. Chairman. Yes. It brings up a lot of valid concerns. To my knowledge, of course, I've been building this for 10 years, I know this road's been built up at least five to six times since I've been employed by Grant County. But the problem has always been that the, I'm sure that part of the residences have signed a petition over and over again, to my knowledge, they've never got 100% of the residences. We brought this up to the last commission, to the previous commission, maybe to take a look at maybe changing the ordinance, in that if you have one petitioner that doesn't want to sign, then you can still actually have a dedication of the roadway. It's been a problem, it's not only a problem for this road, but several other roads.
Will we do that with eminent domain? Because we can't improve somebody else's property.
It says here in the ordinance that the county won't, that the county won't use eminent domain in order to do them. And because lots, there's lots of people, and just in the adverse, that want to keep their roads private. And so when they have a land division and they want to continue to keep their roads private, then they don't have a dedication. Now, I don't know what happened in this one, and maybe they did bring it up to county standards for the subdivision portion of it, but still, the roads were still never dedicated to the county.
Whatever happened to the majority of the roads?
Well, and that's exactly what I'm trying to say.
That the majority of the residents have signed, and I'm sure that if we, if we went up and checked on these residents that haven't signed, I know that last night we tried to contact one person that we still couldn't find at home, and I know that if we got the petition to him, he would sign it in a heartbeat.
I'm sure, I just say what the ordinance states, and another concern, we do go out and seek funding for roads that are currently county maintained. It's actually against New Mexico law for the county to seek funding for private roads. It's anti-donation in that we can't use public funds to improve, to improve private roads. So the county's hands are kind of tied at the same time.
I think that petitions are all well and good, but they're real, the rubber hits the road when we, when we go ahead, have it surveyed, have it plotted on exactly what we need from each resident, and somehow or another, we ride it up to where unless 100% of them dedicate that portion of the road to the county, then all the rest of them are not employed and start having them signed one at a time. And when 100% of them are signed, then the county has a dedicated roadway, and then we can start with funding. But until we own it, we cannot do any work on it at all.
And I think the first issue, of course, is the dedication, we've got to have our attorneys start working on that. But the second issue is the cost. Have you figured, I believe you have some, Ron.
In fact, I did, I think the last time I did it was a couple of years ago, Commissioner Lomas, and I looked at it, and I always figured on the high end, but I only, I only did it down to the low water crossing. And was talking to Mr. Sandoval, he told me that road goes another four tenths of a mile down through there. And like I said, I always make my estimates on the high end, and it's usually cheaper than what I make it, but it was around $130,000, that was equipment, labor, and materials to do that section there.
Did that include just Loma Verde, or the streets, the side street?
Yeah, it's just Loma Verde. Loma Verde. I've been out on that road, I know how bad it is, and that's, and I can go back and get you pretty close to a hard figure on it too. But like I said, that was just down to that low water crossing, I didn't go past there. And if we do this, we're going to have to do the whole road, just Loma Verde road.
Well, I want to thank you for listening to us anyway, and I hope that this commission will please, please work with us this time and us not have to come again another two, three years. Thank you.
Just one more thing before you leave, the difference between, obviously, the difference between North Hurley Road and the streets in Tyrone are, the county does own those currently, so that's why we can seek funding elsewhere for them. And the other thing is, the people responsible for enforcing covenants are actually the residents. So if the ball was dropped, it was dropped by the residents, nobody civilly, that's how that's done.
Well, you know, that, that we tried enforcing that law, and before we knew it, we were notified that, that it was, it was a done deal, and we were never, we were never invited to a court hearing, whatever, we were never invited, we were never notified. So it's kind of hard to say that the residents dropped the ball because we were not informed.
Yeah.
Okay. And we understand your persuasion Sally, thank you for coming forward.
I tried that road quite a few times for that reason, but it is very bad, so we can help you all out.
I just have a quick question as far as the dedication of the road, we have, is it going to be from the center of the road, how many feet out? Or is it from the edge of the road now, how many feet out?
Usually from the center, 30 foot on each side.
30 foot on each side from the center?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so are we going to get somebody to come in and, because everybody's, I'm sure is going to say, well, where exactly is that going to put my fence line? You know, and we're going to need some guidance in there from the county to say, okay, all the way down the road, you know, can we get our, can we get the surveyor out there to stick off 30 feet so we know exactly what they're looking at? Because I think that's going to be an issue, they're going to say, well, wait a minute, where exactly is that?
I forgot if the chicken comes before the egg, or how that works, but I, you know, I don't know who you get to survey it, or how that works, Sam, do you got an idea?
The ordinance is specific on, the residents have to provide a plat. That's what the ordinance states now. That's all that I know of. Because I would assume...
For these purposes?
Well, we may be able to utilize an old survey, or some, something that identifies the road. The plat itself, it does have meat and bounds on it, so I'm assuming that we can actually get the road center line, and we can probably guesstimate, but at some point in time, there's probably been, for the dedication itself, there'll have to be a legal description, there'll have to be a description of the dedication itself, and so a plat, well, it's going to have to be done, so it's, that's an added expense, so can't get around.
Well, let's start working towards the, the road, and see if we can get it done.
With that being said, I mean, everybody in there wants the help. I mean, we're going to do whatever we have to do to get that done. You know, if the county can come in and do their part and say, okay, this is what we have to do, this is what you're going to have to give us, because we're at a loss, we don't know what we have to give.
Right.
You know, and it's everybody that butts up against the road, right? So the people that don't have property on, on the road itself, don't have a say so, correct?
Not for the dedication.
Not for the dedication, so that's, and then all we need is two thirds of the people, which I think I already have with the, with the petition, for, for the assessment.
Right, right, for the assessment, yes, for the dedication, no, everyone that butts the road.
And there's a different form for that dedication.
No, it's the same petition.
Okay, it's the same petition form that we need. So I know that M.C. Vada went in there, and I think there was only 45 residences in that subdivision, but there's less than that on, on the main road, so...
Yeah, we can get you all the residences on that main road, we can get it from the matter.
The main road's the only one you need dedications from, and you need two thirds of everybody that uses the road, is that what I'm hearing?
No, 100% of everybody, or two thirds, for the assessment district, you need 66% of the land.
Landowners on the main road.
For the dedication.
Okay.
The dedication is 100. For the improvement district, it's, it's not 66% of the people, it's 66% of the land.
Oh, okay.
So if Mr. Sandoval owned 50% of the land, he owned one side of Loma Verde road completely, he would be 50%, and he would only need another 16% to get the dedication.
Okay.
So the dedication goes off of the physical land owned by the people?
The dedication is 100% of the people, the improvement district is 60% of the land. Contingent to the road?
Yes.
So if there's an easement off that road to somebody that has a flag lot, those people are not...
They have to abut the road.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's different, you're looking, the two different things look at different, the dedication looks at people, you need 100% of the people to sign. The improvement district looks at 66% of the land.
For them, it's long, probably 66%. Now, how difficult would it be to get out there and get an approximate center line on the road, and would we be in violation of any type of intent that they're making?
That's where you're really, I mean, you're kind of right on the line on this one, is because this isn't, it's not public land, it's private land, and so you're going on private land, and so we'll have to look at it. This one is one of those that's right on the fence as to whether or not it is or...
If we were going to buy a piece of property somewhere, that somebody wanted to give us for a fire station, would we not go and survey it? What is the difference? I don't understand.
Yeah, it's...
That's where I was going.
Yeah, and there you're...
Yeah, yeah.
In essence, you're not, yeah, I mean, it's, and that's why I say it's one of those gray ones, this is not, the commission isn't seeking to buy 30 feet of every one of these people's property. The residents are seeking to give the commissioners 30%, and in that case, we usually have those people do it, just because they're trying to give us something. That's where we'll have to research, that's why I'm saying, this is one of those gray ones, there's not a straight answer saying, yes, we have to do it this way, or yes, we have to do it that way, because we haven't done one of these. In the past, what we do is if we're going and buying a piece of property, I'll get a survey on it, I get an environmental, and I get an archaeological survey done as well, because I've got to make sure that I'm not buying a piece of property that has an environmental waste dump on it, it's an archaeological site that I won't be able to do anything with. So those are things we'll have to look at as we go forward with this. Some of those studies might have been done when we researched the subdivision, I don't know.
Okay.
And so, and it might be as simple as if we take the old plats, and if it's got control points, a surveyor might be able to go out there and do it real easy and it not be a lot. We might be able to work a deal out with them where they go and preliminarily lay something out based on an outcome of the commission going forward with an improvement district, and so there's things that we can do, we need to talk, you know, myself and Anthony and Dave, and see what we can do. I wanted to ask, is Mr. Sandoval the spokesman, I mean, because it'd be easier to have one spokesman for the group, and I'm not trying to alienate any of the residents, but trying to get everybody together for a meeting.
I'd be more than happy to be the spokesman, because I know I have a lot of, a lot of residences out there that are tired of coming up here and doing what I'm doing.
Yeah.
You know, and so I'm, I'm a fresh voice for us, you know, and I'm more than willing to do it. So, you know, I know, I know most of you on a personal basis, and I appreciate you guys taking the time out to listen to us, but one other thing I wanted to add is that if we go out there and survey it and say, okay, this is what we're going to do, you're going to go back out there and survey it again because he's going to, he's going to do the road, he's not going to go off of our survey, he's going to go off of his survey, because that's the one that's going to count. So why would we want to do that and then do it again?
That's why to catch Tony. Let them do some legal work on that and see what we got to do, rather than just speculate, because that's all we're doing now.
Okay, so, yeah, by the time, by the time we come back again, I'll have, I'll do a little more on the, 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 on
But what I'm saying is that's a complaint from a lot of, not only property owners, but owners trying to sell property, is the road.
I think the road brings up the property value, you know, yes, it does.
And one other thing adding to that is, we have really no law out there. I mean, the sheriff comes out there, he does, when he gets a call, but we can't regulate speed, we can't do anything. The only thing they can, the law can really go out there and do is bust a DWI, and just respond to vandalism and crimes of that nature, but they can't, they can't go out there and patrol and do, give us a service there that everybody else gets.
Okay.
Because it's private.
Right.
So, I'm gonna try to get away from that.
Okay, thanks, Lon.
Okay, thank you.
Next item on the agenda, approve or disapprove the application for fiscal year 2013 fire protection grant for the Pinos Altos Center and Santa Rita Volunteer Fire Departments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, you have the two applications. The first one, Pinos Altos, is seeking thirty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars. It's for five AED devices, six sets of bunker gear, one washing machine, one portable cascade system, which is the system that they rebuild their Scott air packs with in their system, and one ATV and trailer. The total would be thirty-nine thousand, two hundred, and they're required to have a twenty percent match, which is seven thousand, eight hundred and forty, which the grant would be for thirty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. They do have the match, the chief is here, if you have any questions over. And then the other is Santa Rita Fire Department, and they have their list, theirs comes to a total of fifty-two thousand, one hundred and forty dollars, and it's to purchase different equipment, the SCBA's full, SCBA's, some cylinders for those, different lengths of hose and ladders, nozzles, plate pipes, flathead axes and pickaxes, pick poles, some hand lights, some spanner wrenches, different types of connectors, salvage covers, wheel chocks, traffic vests and traffic cones, flares and mounting brackets, one generator, one positive pressure fan, and one, two scene lights, a two-light system with a battery and a case. And so theirs would be fifty-two thousand, one forty, less the match of ten thousand, four twenty-eight, their grant they're seeking is forty-one thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars. The match money on both of those comes out of their fire funds, or they're either state fire funds or their county excise tax funds, fire excise tax funds that each department has, so it does not come from the general fund or the commissioners, it comes from their own department.
Okay. Any questions?
I wanted to know what exactly would an ATV be used for, battery?
Chief? The commissioner asked, I'll let him ask his question.
What exactly would an ATV be used for?
Hello, I'm Lucy Whitmarsh, and I'm the fire chief for the Pinos Altos Volunteer Fire Rescue, and we have a lot of remote areas in our district. We had a fire that was out on the Avery Ranch Road, and it was on private property, but it is very rugged terrain, and it's also in a grazing area, and so for us to get to some of these remote areas with water to be able to extinguish the fire, that would help us to do that.
Be a four-seater or a six-seater or so to transport?
Well, usually what they are is, they're specially equipped for firefighting, and have a small water tank and two seaters, and, but we would also need a trailer to get it to the location, like in this instance, we would be able to get it on a dirt road, you know, haul it on a dirt road to get to actually where we would want to access the fire.
Good, I just wanted to make it clear, because I know a lot of people say, well, why do they get an ATV just to go out there?
Yeah, there's, and I know some of the fire chiefs, we've seen, I've seen a model of this, not knowing which one specifically the chief is looking at, but I've seen one, and it's basically one of the side-by-sides, a type of Rhino, one of those types of vehicles, and what they do is they just retrofit a small tank, typically, I think they're about a fifty or a hundred gallon water tank in the back, and so they're able to carry some water in, and typically you use them like the Forest Service uses the small water tanks on their back with the little pumps, they call them piss pumps to put out the fire, is actually the name of the pump. I didn't make it up.
Let me know where that ATV is for ten thousand, you can actually...
So, but they, these are, they're very good vehicles, and that's what they have, it's a small ability for somebody that's a passenger possibly to ride and squirt some water. It's not made for long-term attack, it's like an initial attack to get in, so you can try and slow the progression of the fire while you're waiting for resources to get there.
Yeah, that's actually a very good price.
They are usually very good priced, like I said, because they are for firefighting, they, they're not so expensive, and they don't have all the bells and whistles on them, they're kinda stripped-down models.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Lucy.
Anything else?
Take a motion then.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the application for FY 2013 fire protection grant for the Pinos Altos and Santa Rita Volunteer Fire Departments.
And I will second that motion, Chairman.
There's a motion and a second to approve the fiscal year 2013 fire protection grant for PA and Santa Rita Volunteer Fire Departments. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six and five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. At this time, I would like to take about a five-minute break if, sorry, nobody else?
Yeah.
All right, we'll be in recess for about five minutes. Call back order to the Grant County Commission meeting of September eleventh. Next item on the agenda is contracts and agreement. First one is to approve or disapprove agreement number A-1241, this is a professional services agreement with El Refugio in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve agreement number A-1241.
And I will second that motion.
This is a motion to approve and seconded an agreement with A-1241, is there any discussion on the motion?
I'm just happy to see that we have an adequate professional services agreement and that we can help this very important agency.
I wanted to let the commissioners know I did meet with Maria from El Refugio, and some of the reasons for the increase, as she stated in her letter to you, that she's had over eighty thousand dollars worth of services provided that haven't been funded, and Grant County has gone from, I believe she said we were seventeenth in the state for domestic violence to sixth.
Wow.
And so we've...
So we're getting better at something, huh?
I guess, and the wrong thing.
In the wrong direction.
And so we've jumped to sixth, and so the domestic violence has increased so much in the community, and so then, and therefore, her business has increased, unfortunately. She's one that would rather be put out of business than to remain in business.
Does a violent person ever have to pay you?
There are some court orders, fines and fees that come along with that sentencing, but I don't believe it's enough to cover the services that she provides.
And again, if you read the police order, it's the more innovative with domestic disorder, I just figured.
Yeah, now, six.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six and five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Approve or disapprove agreement number A-1242, an agreement for services with the Wellness Coalition in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-five, I believe this is for park maintenance at Baton.
Yes, this is an agreement we did last year, and we've budgeted the money again this year for it. This is, we worked with the Wellness Coalition, they send the group of kids out there, they do different trail work, cleaning, maintenance, did some erosion projects out there. They've actually, this year, they were looking at coordinating this agreement with their youth council that they do, they've got some projects that they've put in line to try and receive other funding, to do some better erosion and trail work out there in the park area that won't cost the county money. They're leveraging this agreement to be able to do that, because they have the manpower out there.
Can you make sure that they get with Commissioner Ramos and get that one field, maybe just hauling in some, some...
And I think it's been corrected by the maintenance department, they worked, I mean, a few days last week fixing it, but the problem is, it's gonna get washed out again, they say we have bad rain, and they're gonna be out there fixing it.
So we need to work on drainage above the field.
I think the engineering above needs to be taken care of first and figure out what exactly we need to do to stop it, where the water's coming from. And not only that, but we need to get somebody out there now for those weeds, the weeds, I lost a couple of kids in the weeds this weekend, I'm sorry.
What, you lost a couple of kids?
Yeah, weeds are getting so tall, he's losing his baseball players.
And that's part of what these costs...
Yeah, and so we'll talk with Sam, and maybe what we can do is if the county were to pay, say, Pam Weber does a lot of our drainage plans and things, if we paid Pam to look at drainage on that field to try and divert it, then maybe she can design something that this group can go in and do the labor to build that, if we buy the materials, if it's rock or something like that. Sam's guys can go in and work on that erosion control project, and so we'll talk with Sam and see if that's a feasible deal and get that...
Do we still have a full-time maintenance person out there?
We don't, they kinda rotate their guys, and that was the purpose of this, is to try and, before we did this, we had somebody that was out there forty hours a week that just dedicated their time to, and the purpose of doing this was to try and free up that individual to where they could go other places and have this, and so these guys have done a lot of work at the park over the last year. The contract is not to exceed amount, and so I don't think they were able to build all the hours last year, because they just had so much work other places as well, but they were out there doing projects. So he builds what he needs to and does the work, he's not just going out there trying to work to make the money.
Okay.
Does a real good job.
Can I get a motion?
Chairman Caston, I move to approve agreement number A-1242.
Can I second? Motion to approve agreement A-1242, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six and five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item I, approve or disapprove agreement number A-1243 Cooperative Marketing Grant Agreement with the New Mexico Tourism Department in the amount of six thousand dollars. Joe, you wanna go over that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, this is an agreement we get each year, the New Mexico Tourism Department gives us money to help offset some of our costs of advertising tourism in New Mexico. Our lodgers' tax committee is the one that does this for us, and so basically what they do is a portion of their ads that they're doing will be provided at a fifty percent match, and so they work with the tourism department and get that done, so they're getting three thousand dollars, there's six thousand in eligible expenses, and three thousand dollars will be reimbursed back to us in this agreement.
Yeah, I got a phone call asking for more money.
For more?
Yes.
Money?
From owner of the K-Way.
Jackie Blurt?
Yeah, Blurt, she, I guess, represents us on the board.
Yes.
And they wanted to see if we could get them up to ten thousand.
On this agreement, this is all that was awarded to them, we have no control over this, what happened is, our lodgers' tax committee went and presented their proposal to the state, and then the state looks at all of them and funds, and so that's what the state funded, so we can't get any more than this.
And what they wanted to do is put some kind of billboard over there between our castle and our places. I know, very expensive.
Yeah, the additional funding can come out of our lodgers' tax money that they have, but on this agreement specifically, we can't get any more than we're getting from them.
Now, the lodgers' tax that we currently have, does that have to go through us, or do they approve it themselves?
What typically happens is, they submit a budget to us, I think this year, there's, can't remember, it's forty or fifty thousand that they have to spend, and then what they do is they basically spend that on advertising, they don't have to come to the commission each time, we just verify that when they submit their receipts and when their POs are done, that it qualifies for lodgers' tax, which is to advertise different activities. They've presented in the past, they don't advertise Grant County, because people don't vacation to Grant County, they vacation to the cliff dwellings, they vacation for the Blues Festival, so that's what they do.
Grant County home of them.
Well, and they mention Grant County, they, their new logos with the cycling is "Come Train in Grant County," those type of things, so they're starting, they mention Grant County, but they mention all the other things around the outside of the ad as well, Silver City, different things to draw people in.
For the purpose you mentioned, then, the forty, fifty thousand they already have in there is perfectly fine.
Yeah, and probably what they've done is tried to allocate that to other places, and so they're wanting to do something additional and get more money from the commissioners above and beyond the money they already have, would be my guess, I haven't spoke to her, but that would be my guess.
We currently have, what, five people on the lodgers' tax committee?
That's true.
In the future, it might be a good idea to have them come in and just give us a little...
And we've asked, the chairman had met with, yeah, and I'm drawing a blank on her name, she owns the Cusitas de Hila.
Becky O'Connor.
Becky O'Connor. Chairman Caston had met with her, and he brought that up to her, is that he would like her to come, and we don't know if it needs to be quarterly, or if it needs to be every six months, but to start off quarterly, come and present to the commission and tell them what you're doing.
I agree. I was very impressed with what they've done so far this year, so, and I guess it was less than, it wasn't as much I wanted her to report, I wanted her to come and show us all the things they had done, so...
It's really a very good board, I mean, we really need them, and hopefully they're doing the right thing, like I said, but I don't know, because I've never...
I know they have one excellent advertisement, because I'm...
Okay, can I get a motion?
Chairman Caston, I move to approve agreement number A-1243.
Can I second? There's a motion to approve A-1243, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six and five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we move to resolutions, item J, approve or disapprove resolution number R-1234, a resolution entering into a lease agreement with Caterpillar Financial Services Corporation for six new motor graders for the Grant County Road Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, we purchased the six new rotor, motor graders, and we looked at different financing options as we went through that process. As part of the financing, we traded in the six graders that we had, and the commission has already gone through the act of disposing those graders, so we could trade them in. What we've come to decide is that we would like to finance them through Caterpillar instead of paying for them out of our general fund, they offered us a very good rate, it was right at three percent, just under three, I think it's two-nine, and so our payments would be fifty-eight hundred dollars a month for all six blades, for a sixty-month period, and at the end of that time, for twenty-five thousand dollars each, we can choose to purchase them, or we can turn them back to them at the end of that leasing period, which is a very good deal. When we looked at different options, I had the Finance Authority, New Mexico Finance Authority give us an option, and theirs was gonna be about nine thousand dollars a month. We checked with some of the local banks, and nobody could really get us that good of a rate, because Caterpillar was policing it in-house, they were financing it in their own, and so what this resolution does is it's just authorizing us to finalize those documents with them, we've already got the blades here, they're working great, Mr. Moore has them distributed throughout, I've spoken to some of the blade operators, and they've said it was a little hard to get used to at first, because they don't have a steering wheel, they have two joysticks, but now they're really enjoying using their new blades.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve resolution number R-1234.
I will second that motion.
The motion is my second, to approve R-1234, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six and five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove resolution number R-1235, notice of intent to adopt an ordinance entitled Countywide Local Option of the Liquor Control Act for Sunday Sales of Alcoholic Beverages.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I'll go ahead and let Mr. Gorman, who's been here three meetings, and finally gets an item on the agenda. So I won't steal his thunder, I'll let him go ahead and present this item to you, since he's done all the work on it.
Thank you, Chairman, commissioners, this is a, what is called the Local Option of the Liquor Control Act, and it gives the ability of the county to put on the ballot the question to allow Sunday sales by the drink in those establishments within the county between the hours of twelve PM and twelve AM, and in the years, that Sunday falls on December thirty-first, from twelve noon until two AM, this will be placed on the ballot for the question and put to the general public for vote in the general election, and based on those results, we will move forward.
And this is drinks by the glass, they cannot purchase alcohol to take with them.
This is specifically for drink by the glass.
And the process is, we've done several ordinances, that we have to do an intent to adopt an ordinance, it's two weeks on display at the clerk's office, and then in two weeks, the commission, at the twenty-fifth meeting, will hold a public hearing and either approve or disapprove the ordinance, and then at that point in time, it becomes the law. Robert will have the question sent to the publisher, so that it would be included on the ballot in the general election, and if it's voted for, then we'll put it in place, if not, then we wait another year.
That's correct.
Minimum a year before you could call a special election for it, or you'd wait till the next general for it to be put on the ballot again. And it always has to be on a general or a special, because it has to be open to all voters, and people that are not registered to a party cannot vote in the primaries.
Chairman Caston, I move to approve resolution number R-1235.
Can I second? There's a motion to approve R-1235, is there any discussion on that motion?
Of course, this will be left up to the voters, but I think this will be a real asset for our small businesses.
Yes, I agree.
Our restaurant businesses and so forth, so...
B and Bs.
Yes, B and Bs.
All those in favor, six and five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove resolution number R-1236, supported the New Mexico Association of Counties Legislative Priorities for 2013.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, this resolution, we brought forward, the commission, each year we do a resolution to support the priorities in MAC, which is New Mexico Association of Counties. Mr. Villa is the board member for Grant County, you have to be an elected official to be that board member, he's been the board member for four years, Randy? And so he had given this all, a packet of all the resolutions that were put in front of the board, and these are the six that they've chosen, real property, sales disclosure, local government, database royalties, traffic violation reform, EMS funding, fireworks, licensing and safety, and delinquent property tax sales.
EMS funding, fireworks licensing and safety, and delinquent property tax sales. Um, three of them are from the Commissioner's affiliate, they come forward, one is from the clerks, one is from the assessor, and one is from the treasurer. Um, I had the, we put on the back copies of those resolutions on the back of this, um, that were brought forth to them. The basic, um, I know the, the local government database royalties is that the clerk's office wants to start to charge a fee for giving the database. Right now, if it's electronic, uh, the way the law states, you have to charge a fee that's comparable to your costs and so it's hard to put a value on to an electronic piece of data. Um, the clerk in the past tried to do something here when he was asked for a large volume of his data and we were, uh, challenged on it and I think we ended up getting five bucks or something like that for the CDs he put it on for almost his entire database.
And Chairman Commissioners, um, on that, we have no problem adding data to the public at, at any time, but there's companies that, that are out there that purchase our data for pennies on the dollar and go sell it to somebody else and make quite a large amount of money off of data that shouldn't be.
And I totally agree, when I was county clerk, we spent $32,000 putting some of that information onto the computer. So that only cost us a pretty penny when it's to us, I mean, the taxpayers, so, I mean, there's got to be some kind of a, uh, payback to, for using that information.
It's, it's a hard deal. Um, the, the commissioners, number one, the traffic violation reform is, is really just to try and decriminalize some of the traffic citations to get people out of the jails. They pushed for that last year and this year. Um, EMS funding is to try and get some more funding for the rural EMS area.
I do have one question, I'm, I'm just curious. Um, Joseph, in Bernabeu County, there are approximately 40,000 outstanding warrants for relating to traffic offenses.
Joseph's gone. They disappeared.
Anyway, I was just curious as to how many we had.
Um, I don't know, I don't know if he could tell you, um, I don't know if the sheriff could tell you because that's a court, I, um, he gets requests and we do...
A former Judge Hall.
Roundups.
Because that sounds very detrimental about it.
No, and we've worked with, um, as Grant County, we worked with magistrate court when Judge Hall was the, the judge there and it, we started getting the offenders that failed to pay fines were being sentenced to our public works department to do community service instead of our detention center. And it worked pretty good because these people aren't inmates and so we didn't have to worry if they didn't show up. We don't have an inmate that has walked away, we would just let the judge know that they failed to show up and then he would issue his bench warrants for their arrest and deal with them. Uh, and we didn't have to. And so it's really a nice program, it's been going on, that started in magistrate and Bayard now as well has been doing it. There's other agencies that are actually doing it now. At first it was us taking everybody and now, uh, we're kind of competing with other people to get those failure to pay fines to do community service. So it's worked out really good. Um, the EMS funding is just to, like I said, to provide more rural EMS services funding to those groups because right now it's very limited. Um, fireworks licensing and safety is giving some authority to the commissioners to restrict the sale of fireworks, sale and use more than they can now in times of extreme drought. Um, this is one the governor pushed for last year and it didn't get through. Uh, the, the Commissioner's affiliate supports that, that, you know, it's outside of your control, when you really need to shut things down, you can't, your hands are tied and this will open that up.
Glad to see this.
The delinquent property tax sales, um, is the number one for the treasures and, and really the language, it's just a language change from currently the property tax sales, it says, "They may have them" and they want to change it to "They shall have them." That forces them to have them and not give them the discretion of whether or not they want to come and do a property tax sale.
Yeah, that's, uh, like for us, we're three years behind the program having 12 years to go. So, uh, you know, we have to resist it because they said, uh, they flipped the property tax amendment them, uh, three weeks ago and we, we, we have that and it seems to have happened because according to them, they're shorthand in, you know, there was something there, so we give them, so.
And the number one is the real property sales disclosure, that is the assessors, it's their number one priority this year is to get that data, the sales disclosure data that the assessors office isn't getting now when they do their appraisals on new property, real property.
On both, uh, residents or non-residents?
It's all ready. So those are the top priorities that in MAC will be lobbying for with their lobbyists. It's not necessarily that Grant County can't go after something, be it solid waste.
Chairman, it's the members of the board. Uh, John's right, um, these, these aren't really top one through six, they're just six priorities that they will, uh, really keep an eye on, but it doesn't, uh, prevent the commission affiliates, assessors, or treasurer to go after them. There was 28 total priorities, um, and I just got an email today, I want to bring it to the chairman of the commission that says, "Actions deferred to October board meeting for further discussion." And the number one was, uh, solid waste collection fee.
What date is that?
It's going to be October the 5th in Los Alamos.
Oh, commission.
So, I think at this point, it was just pushed on to the next meeting for further discussion to see. It's going to be on there and it doesn't, again, uh, preclude you from, or the commission's affiliate to continue to push this issue forward. Uh, it's just one that wasn't voted in the top six priorities, but it is on their radar to be, to be looked at.
Okay.
Went to the last one and got beat up.
The other ones were the clerk, the clerk board...
Take a share with me this time.
Price gouge.
Price gouge.
Those, those three will be looked at, uh, further, for the discussion in that department.
Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve resolution number R-12-36.
And I will second that motion.
All those in favor, 65 say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Uh, approve or disapprove resolution number R-12-37, certificate of property tax rates. Do you want to go over that? Mr. Sessions?
I just, just want to bring these up before you, uh, to approve the 2012 tax rates. Uh, I did, again, like I mentioned earlier, run the yield control formula to make sure that our rates, which is just Grant County, was correct, and it is. Um, also was in contact with some of the other entities on this to make sure that, that those rates were correct and they, they all seem to be in line. There is an increase, uh, on the two out school district. I think before you have the two comparisons, 2011 and 2012, uh, most of it falls within our school, uh, education. Um, there's some bonds that have to be paid and, and when they don't have enough valuation to bring in that revenue, then that's going to increase the rates. And that, that's one thing I, I like to, to mention to the public when we're talking about valuation, uh, you know, the higher the valuation, the lower the rate applied to those values. And when you don't have any value in particular jurisdictions, then the rate's going to increase. And so, uh, it's not in the municipalities, it's not in the county, but it's, it's within the educational system and, and, uh, you know, so when people see those increases, which in my opinion are substantial, um, those are the reasons why. And all this will be on my, a webpage for the assessors office and they can look it in with the comparisons as well.
So it looks like the silver schools went down, but the Cobre School District went up on their bond rates.
I mean, the bond rates.
Isn't that because you're building new schools?
Right.
Yeah, they're having to pay back those bonds and, and then you look at your values you have. Um, ours debt service is for the bonds for the jail construction and then actually went down a little bit because we built, um, we have this argument every year with DFA. Um, the treasurer and I got together when we originally did the bonds, yeah, because there's a, there's a call in them, that we were trying to build a reserve and keep our debt service rate flat so we could build a reserve to call these bonds early for the taxpayers and not have to pay them off for the full term. But DFA just doesn't like to see it that way and so every year we set the values, I've got a call and we argue with them that we want it left alone and we fight and fight and, and every year we have a new guy. We, we get it explained to the old guy and we've got a new analyst each year. And so this year they, they bought some of our story but wouldn't get it, have it all and so they dropped us a little bit because we have a reserve built in there, so it should be enough to pay it and keep our reserve but not grow it. So it, it'll extend the time before we can make the call is what's going to happen, is we won't be able to make it as early as we wish. So, but we'll, we'll work with them. I mean, we're not going to fight them, we're just trying to explain what we're trying to do and they fight us each year that we can't do it and they try and drop it down to very low and make us use up our full reserve, which we've escrowed the reserve and we've done what we're supposed to with it and we're following the laws. It's just, they can't comprehend that we want to pay something off early, they're trying to fight us and make us pay it full time.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve resolution number R-12-37.
And I'll second that motion.
Motion, I'll second to approve R-12-37, is there any discussion on the motion?
And, and Mr. Chairman, the members of the board with this, accepting that these rates will allow me to, to send the valuation to the treasurer for collection.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, 65 say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Item N, approve or disapprove resolution number R-12-38, authorization and submission of the Special Appropriations Agreement of the New Mexico Environment Department for Fort Barrett Medical Center Sewer System Improvements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um, this is a new requirement that's been put on legislative appropriations that we've never had in the past, is they now require us to do this resolution whenever we have a legislative appropriation. And this is for, we received one, a hundred thousand dollars, the commission has already approved the agreement, to do the lift station at the Fort Barrett Medical Center. So we now have to do this resolution, give them the signature authority on the reimbursement request and other documents required to be submitted to them, uh, so that they'll go ahead and release that funding to us so we can start that project.
Uh, Commissioner Caston, I need to approve resolution R-12-38.
Can I second? There's a motion, I'll second to approve R-12-38, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, 65 say aye. Aye. Can we get a motion to adjourn if there's nothing further?
Actually, I've got, uh, we got skipped on the...
Oh, you did? I've heard a motion to adjourn.
I just, I just want to kind of, uh, report that, uh, our New Mexico Alliance, Commissioner Alliance, met last month and we had a lot of good discussions. Um, one resolution that was passed was a wolf issue and we, uh, voted in favor of the resolution to support the governor, uh, to support the governor and, uh, in taking out the troubled wolves. And I wanted to specify troubled wolves because I did get some emails saying that we're trying to get rid of the, the wolf packs in the, in the Heeland, that's completely false again. You know, that's usually what comes out once we do something that we feel is very important in that, uh, in that alliance. But I just wanted to state that they are troubled wolves, wolves that have been attacking cattle, wolves that are hanging around, around homes, wolves that are knocking over garbage like a, like a canine here in town would do. Um, and, uh, so, so those are the type of troubled wolves that they're recommending you to get rid of, uh, from our Heela National Forest. Um, I also wanted to, uh, ask if our ETJ committee has, has met yet?
I have not heard, um, we contacted them, but I haven't been part of that.
Have they appointed the fifth member?
Not to my knowledge, yeah, so we'll check with them. I know that the planning department was coordinating that and so we'll, no, the fifth member is a county resident at large.
At large.
They do not live in the town limits, they cannot live in the town limits for the ETJ, they're at large.
Well, let's make sure that we get them coordinated before our next meeting and that way we could at least know if they're going to be meeting or if they've already met. Uh, I also wanted to congratulate the Hurley Infant Jesus Church over in Hurley, they're, they've been declared a shrine, there's only two shrines in the whole state of New Mexico, um, one's in Chimalo and one's in, uh, now in Hurley. And, uh, there was over 700 visitors down in, in, uh, in Hurley on, on Saturday. So that was really a big thing for, for the town of Hurley and, uh, the Hurley Infant Jesus Catholic Church. Um, so I'd like to congratulate, uh, our, our priest there, which is Father Barreto, and he's done a really good job and, uh, like to thank the bishop for, for coming down and making it a shrine. This would be a major attraction for Southern New Mexico. And, uh, we had people, people show up from all over the United States. So it's really a, a big, big celebration on Saturday. That's all I've got.
Okay.
Uh, just a reminder that the Grant County Fair is right around the corner. Um, so it's Wednesday, December 26th, then around, it's September, I'm sorry. That wasn't about at all. September 26th to the 29th, so hope everybody can make it out there. And I guess our meeting will be on Tuesday then, when I, or session and...
Twenty fifth, right, is it? Twenty third?
I don't know, let's check our, uh...
Dandy dandy, don't matter.
Twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth.
Okay.
We, uh, I'm, I'm done. Uh, in the last month, we've done a couple of things, we've, um, we've gone up and met with the bond council to, uh, start working on the bonds for the renovation in addition to Heela Regional Medical Center. Uh, it's going to be quite a, quite a facility, we're spending about $38 million total. Uh, we've also met with Property Control, working on trying to obtain use of the little theater, um, so we can, since our convention centers closed down, uh, we have a little more room to put people for weddings and parties and such. Uh, we also asked for the old trailer park so we could be thinking about renovations to it to become a, an RV park for, to make the baton park even better when they're having tournaments and such in the summer. Um, and that's about all, I guess we did on that trip. And we met with Hallie and Rudy and Diane yesterday and we went over our ICIP. Um, there's probably not going to be enough money to do much more than the first two and we're going to have to, to really pare them down to where we are spending exactly what we have to spend and no more and then figure on doing a, a, uh, another proof in the, in the next couple of years with other funding or more funding from them. And I guess that's all.
And they seem to be in agreement with our priorities.
They're fine with our priorities. They, none of those, those guys ever argue about our priorities, they just want to make sure that they're, that they're, do real and doable and fundable and, so, go ahead, Joe.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to, really, on your, the, when we talked about, whenever the commission talks about, like, we want to do the RV park or do things like that, I received an email from one of the members of our lodgers tax committee, um, and they were concerned about the commission trying to compete, compete with commercial businesses. And that's not what we're doing, is we're trying to develop infrastructure that businesses can come in and use. We're not wanting to run RV parks or different things like that. It's similar to the daycare, uh, when the commission built that, is, uh, there was a need for a daycare facility and nobody was providing it, so the commission provided a daycare facility and we do not run a daycare. Um, a private individual runs that facility and, and it's her business. Um, and that's similar to this, is we're not trying to get in business to compete with the businesses in town, we're trying to bring more business, uh, capability, possibilities. Um, the mining district, there's been discussions in meetings we were at, that somebody wants to open a trailer, or not trailer, but an RV park down in that area. Um, and so that's where we started entertaining this, is to try and build the infrastructure where somebody could come in and lease it and use it and run a business out of it because a lot of people don't have the capital in these downturned economic times to do a startup and get the infrastructure put in, that's the big cost. And so that's what we're trying to do, not trying to compete. And I just want to make that clear.
We need to make sure that we respond to those concerns, right? I got the seat, but...
And that concern was over the reservoir project, uh, the Commissioner Ramos has been working on. And, and in that project, we talked about having overnight camping at the reservoir and, and these people are concerned. We're not looking at competing, we're looking at trying to provide more, uh, infrastructure for businesses.
And bringing people into the area.
So I will respond to them and let them know that it's in no way to compete, compete with commercial businesses, we're just trying to provide infrastructure that them, as a local business, could even possibly lease that facility to run these things if they wish to expand, yes.
I think it's simple economics, you bring the people in, they're going to spend money, you know, so.
So, but we will respond, I just wanted to point that out, that we were questioning that and that's not what the commission's doing, is competing.
I just have one, one comment, um, I spoke with, uh, Dave this morning about, um, when all three commissioners receive an email, if we respond to that email, are we in violation of the Open Meetings Act? Because it's, it comes to all three of us. So Dave's looking into that, but I'm always leery and it's not that I'm trying not to respond to these, but I'm a little worried about the violation of the Open Meeting Act, because we're having this discussion through an email. So to me, the easiest thing would be for, um, constituents that have a question to send a separate email to each one of us. a separate email to each one of us.
And the past attorney had looked at that and, and made a kind of a policy for us. It could have the appearance of a rolling quorum or you could turn into a rolling quorum depending on how you answer your email. So if you receive an email where it's copied all the commissioners, if you just reply to the sender and not reply to all, that's where you get into the issue, is if you hit reply to all, now your comments are going to be sent to Commissioner Ramos and Commissioner Caston and that could be construed, the attorney general says, as a rolling quorum based on what the discussion is.
And that's what they.
And so therefore you just hit reply to that individual and you're okay. Just don't reply to the other commissioners. And that's why when I send to you, I send you each the same email individually so that in case you hit reply to all, it just comes to me and it doesn't go to the other commissioners, even if it's just the agenda, I try and separate it out.
Okay. See, that's it? Can I get a motion? The motion, Richard?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Motion passes.